As you heard from Stan.
Oof.
Soon as she tells me we are. Do you have your, you have the word like?
This meeting is called to order. Will everyone please rise for the flag salute? And after, we'd please like to take a moment of silence to send your thoughts and prayers to the victims in Texas. And also, we lost a Summers Point retired police officer, Jules Craddock, this week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and the universal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bruno.
Here.
Councilmember Dupamphylis.
Here.
Councilmember Dill.
Here.
Councilmember McCary.
Here.
Councilmember McWigan.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Council President Johnston.
Here. Also present is Mayor Glasser, Administrator Frost, Deputy Clerk Heath, and City Solicitor Smith, and our City Engineer, Mr. Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda of this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summerspointgov.org. Before we start with our presentations, I just want to, I'm going to pull Resolution Number 128. We will not be doing anything with Resolution Number 128 tonight. We're going to start off with a special presentation for our Summers Point Junior Poet Laureate Class Contest winners. I'm going to ask Christine Ulrich, Errich, Er, Rich, to please come up and introduce our poet. Yeah, that's fine.
I can pronounce Tollman if you like.
That's easier, yeah.
Hi, I'm Christine Ulrich, and tonight we have our Junior Poet Laureate winner, Ashley. We also have two runners up there not present with us. And I'm from the Summers Point Arts Commission, and every year we run a contest in the Jordan Road Schools to get our Junior Poet Laureate. And this is this year's winner. Would you like to come up?
Hi, my name's Ashley Zunyse Chavez, and here's my poem, what is home? What is home? I hear myself thinking at night. Home, I whispered myself. Home is somewhere I felt valued. Home is a place you know where you can fall asleep and feel safe. Home is where you go where you have nowhere else to go. Home is where you grow, you learn, you develop. Home is where I grew up and made those cherishable memories. My home will always forever be my Summers Point, and that's what home means to me. This will always and forever be my cherishable. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to you. That was beautiful.
We didn't do a resolution.
We did, but we're going to have to do a resolution, I think.
At a later date, we will definitely take care of that. Okay, we have a presentation for proposed redevelopment for Scarborough Properties. Mr. Scarborough.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Sean Scarborough. Tonight, I just wanted to briefly introduce the council to a concept that we have for a property that we, my brothers and I recently purchased at the corner of Maryland and Bay Avenue. It's, the address is 100 Maryland Avenue. Assembled with an existing property that we have, it makes up generally the corner across from Caroline's running back into Harbor Cove on the east side of Bay Avenue. What I'd like to do tonight is introduce Mr. Joe Del Duca from the Walters Development Group. They're a firm that does senior housing. And what we're proposing, this is just in concept right now, is to do a project with them on the corner of that property. It would be approximately forty or fifty percent of the assembled property, as I just described. So with that, I'd like to introduce Joe Del Duca, and he has handouts and conceptual drawings to share with you.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening. I could, I just have, I think, five of them. And you know what? A couple of these as well, maybe. Thanks very much.
Want to get one?
Is this what we already have? Oh, no, there's more there. Alex.
Good.
We can share one.
Maybe we should put that up somewhere.
Whatever.
Yeah.
When you were in the talk, I just popped it.
I just brought these as an example. As Sean indicated, Joe Del Duca, the owner of the Walters Group. We build affordable housing in the state of New Jersey. We own over two thousand humans at this point. This is a lot of sort of information that relates to this. It's not simply a development proposal. There are some appendages to it. I'll try and explain it without taking up too much of your time, trying to make sure that it makes some sense and gives you an opportunity to sort of understand what we're talking about here. And for the public's benefit, municipalities in the state of New Jersey have an affordable housing obligation. You, of course, all know that. The litigation, you have a plan that you've got approved through the state, courts, settlement with fair share. And as part of that settlement, it was proposed that a certain amount of family affordable housing would be built on this property. We've had conversations with Sean. We've been looking at Summers Point for some period of time for a development opportunity. And the reason that we have looked at Summers Point is because the way this kind of housing works in New Jersey and in the country is that there's a certain amount of money that the federal government is willing to allocate for communities in each state to provide the money necessary to build first-rate, market-rate-type communities, high-level communities, but at affordable rents. And Summers Point, as it turns out, scores extremely well, is very competitive in that area. And so you have an opportunity that these federal funds could be available to allow this kind of a community to be built. So kind of the advantages, we think, of this, why it makes sense. First of all, you know, we looked at all the Democrats and so forth. You know, much better than I do, you have a, you know, strong senior population. You have a good bit of renters in your senior population. Many of them are cost burdened. And so it would make sense to enable them to live in what would be a nicer, higher-level community and be able to afford the rents in those communities. The reason is because when and if you're able to win what's called nine percent tax credits, the federal government, through federal tax dollars, would invest in equity approximately fourteen million dollars into this community of between fifty and sixty senior, all major street communities. And so you could build something that's similar to what we've shown you. So what we, the big picture that the mayor held up is a community, a hundred-unit community that we have recently built in Stafford Township, Danahawken. If anybody's familiar with it, if you know where the Target and the Costco and all that are, right at the intersection of Route 72 and the Parkway. We own that shopping center. We own that whole community. We built that one hundred-unit community there, the same way we're proposing to build it here. I think the other advantage that you have with doing this potentially is that, and again, I'm citing what Sean has told me, I haven't had this conversation with elected officials here, that you prefer senior over family affordable housing. You'd rather satisfy your obligation with senior affordable housing rather than the family affordable housing. And that's what we're proposing here. We believe, we've had preliminary conversations with Fair Share Housing, that this is acceptable to them and that they would agree to amend your settlement agreement so that you would substitute these senior units with the family units that were originally proposed here. You have a need for it. Atlantic County has a strong need for the housing. It's not an area where Fair Share feels there's an aggressive failure on municipalities' parts, like some other parts of the state, to provide affordable housing. It's not an issue. And so we've had a longstanding relationship with them. We've talked to them about how it might work. And again, they've been agreeable to that. So you kind of laid out what this might look like. It's on a very prominent corner of your community. It's on a great corner. And then sort of the sweet spot of this kind of a community is to build somewhere between fifty and sixty units. We haven't fully engineered the site yet, obviously. This is a concept plan that, sort of the smaller package that I gave you is just an aerial photo with the concept laid out. And it would be almost all one-bedroom units. There might be a handful of two-bedroom units in the community, and it might end up being all one-bedrooms. But they'll be at least predominantly one-bedroom units. And again, I don't want to get too deep into it, assuming your interest as we progress on, you'll get more and more detail. But we provide social services for the people who live there. We provide transportation. We have a van that would be assigned to pick up people, take them shopping, take them to wherever they need to go. There'd be a nurse's office for a certain number of hours a week. This isn't assisted living, it's independent living. But we do provide those services. There's a community, there's community rooms, there's a gym, there's computer labs, there's places where people can gather. We provide classes. We provide assistance for people who need it, people who are on Social Security, kind of work process, Medicare, and all those things. We have social service people who help them. So it's kind of a full-service situation. And again, we've done it all over the state. We've built both family communities and senior communities. The senior community that's on the smaller handout that I gave you is one in Seaside Heights. And there, we demolished an old prime-ridden motel and a lumberyard that is no longer in use, and we were able to build ninety-one senior units there. And these are pictures of the actual building. So if you look at the, you know, the building itself, and you look at the common area of the buildings, and you look at the units, you can see when you look at the units, some have overlooked the baggage, it's not dissimilar to what would happen here. We don't get to do that very often. So we're pretty excited about being at Summers Point. And then attached to it is, you know, our floor plans to give you an idea of how these things lay out. They are spacious. We've got plenty of room to live. Every community that we own is fully occupied, and we have a waiting list in every community. So the downside or the difficulty, I guess, with moving this forward is that you make applications for the state for these funds once a year. You do it once a year. And this year, it's August 31st. So we're under, if we're going to get an application submitted in time for this round, we would need to have certain things completed by then. We'd need to have a sort of a developers' agreement with the city, making it clear that we're providing this housing. We've got to meet their couple of requirements, and through all the details of what's going to happen and how it's going to happen. We would need a preliminary site plan approval from your planning board in order to get this in, among other things, in order to get this in by August 31st. The other aspects of it, you need a resolution of need, which is just a piece of paper. The one thing that is required, you can't compete with the funds to get the dollars unless there's a pilot in place, and the pilot is required on six point two eight percent of the income of the facility. That is typically a bigger lift when you're dealing with families because of schooling kids and seniors. It's not usually such a big deal in towns because it provides some income. I mean, no one's going to tell you that it's a real estate tax winner. It's not like, but the other part of the community that's going to be built by Sean, presumably, will be a very strong ratable. And so on balance, the city will make out and be able to satisfy their affordable housing obligation. And I know you have units in other places that you're going to satisfy, but the units that were intended to be here would no longer be required, and this would satisfy that obligation. So you're advancing your obligations under your settlement agreement. You're getting a senior community that we think would fit extremely well. If we're fortunate enough to win the tax credits, you're getting an infusion of fourteen million dollars of federal dollars into your community to make sure that we can build what you see in the photographs that I've provided you tonight. And we think, because of just the fortitude of your position in the sort of hierarchy of the scoring system, that we have a very good opportunity to achieve that. It's a very competitive process. Just to give you an idea, for whatever reason, I don't even know why, you're classified as urban, but in a perfect-scoring family situation. In the state last year, there were, I think, twenty-four perfect-scoring applications, and there were only six deals funded out of those dollars. So eighteen deals didn't get funded. So it's extremely, on the senior side, on the suburban side of it, I think there were six or seven applications that they funded, two or three deals. So it's a, you know, it's a fair knuckle fight to try and get money to be able to do this. We believe, and again, I know you're absorbing this for the first time, so I don't expect everybody to grasp it completely, but we believe that it would be an asset to the community and an opportunity, I mean, again, under the Fair Housing Act, we can't limit it. One of the first questions we usually get is, hey, can we just limit this to the residents of our town? The answer to that is no. The federal government, of course, will be putting fourteen million dollars on the table. It's not going to let you do that. We do find, however, that because of the marketing we do, and usually we do marketing with the town itself, we get a large number of people, because they're local anyway and people want to stay local, who are either from Ocean City or Summers Point. I would expect people to be mostly, the vast majority of them would be from this very close area. So that's a quick overview and sort of machine gun of information that I'm throwing out at you. More than happy to answer any questions that you have. Our sort of dilemma here is that, you know, we'd like to start, in order to make this happen by August 31st, we kind of have to, we have to keep moving. So we've already engaged engineers and so forth. We know that no one's made any commitments, and we're not suggesting that you add, but we're in the hopes that there's going to be a commitment, sort of moving this forward. But we want you to do that until you tell us, you know, if you don't want it, that you don't want it. And one of the first things I always say to every municipality where I make a presentation is that this is intended to be a collaborative effort. We think it's something that's great for the city. That's a decision for you to, not for me to make. And if it doesn't click out that you agree, then great, we'll move forward and try and make this thing a reality. But if it's something that you don't want, then all you have to do is tell us that we either know or we're not ready, maybe later, and then that's the end of it. This is not a, this is not something that's going to be pushed on anybody. It's too hard to do. There's too many hurdles to push. It's got to be something that you work on, and everybody wants something. There's no such thing as a perfect development, and sure, there'll be somebody, not necessarily up there, but who's not in favor. But generally speaking, we get a lot of support from the people that want to try and build. We've got a lot of communities that need them. As I said, we've done it all over the state of New Jersey and I've got a house at the shore of it in Summers Point since I was a little boy, a million times. In your restaurants, and had a few beers at your bars over the years. So I'm very familiar with your community, which is always the case. And we're really excited about the opportunity to maybe bring some first-rate senior housing to your town. So again, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. And, you know, when asked that, you know, what do we do next? Do you have some interest? Should we pursue this? Should we continue with it? And if so, how do you want us to proceed?
The development up in Stafford Township, how old is that one?
It's about five years old.
Okay. It looks brand new. I did drive through just to take a look, so yeah. So it's very well maintained, was my point.
And I should say that we are our own general contractor, so we build everything that we own, and we are our own management company. So we manage every community that we've ever built. We've never sold a community. As I said, we have two thousand units, and, you know, we're quickly turning into a management company because he added, you know, one hundred and fifty, two hundred units a year, and he added people to manage those communities.
And it's onsite? It'll be onsite management?
Yeah, well, typically, it depends. In this case, yes. The answer's yes, because we don't have any people in supply. So, you know, in Stafford, we have several communities up there. So you don't need an onsite manager in every community. You have an onsite manager in one, but even if you don't have an onsite manager, there's twenty-four-seven opportunity for people to call in. But in this case, we would have onsite management twenty-four-seven, because we don't have a, we wouldn't have a community, you know, within ten miles from this.
I have a question for you. You have a staff that maintains the community on a regular basis, and I realize you can't pick and choose who's going to live there, it's against federal law, but it would be great if we could focus on hiring people locally to work at the community. I'm looking at jobs here, okay, in terms of how you go about your hiring. What's the process there? Do you look locally for the teams that are going to support your community?
Yeah, we absolutely do, and that's what we hope for.
Okay.
That we can get people who know and live in the community, because it's much better to have people who drive two miles to work than it is twenty-five miles.
Right.
Because it makes it quite a bit easier. So, yeah, so they are good jobs. We do have people onsite, and both from a construction standpoint and then, of course, as a proper property management. And we, again, we do all of our own property management, all the maintenance that's done, except for, you know, big jobs. Somebody's got to replace a roof.
Right.
Subcontractor.
Right.
But all the maintenance people, we hire.
Okay.
People come in and do for, even when you're fixing appliances, we have our own people who do that. We've got big enough where we have, you know, our own people manage all that. So we've got a very strong management team. And as I said, I know when I met with Council President Johnston, you know, visit, the only, you can make promises, and every developer who you've ever, who's ever stood here has probably made promises to you. Some have kept their promises, and some haven't kept their promises. And no one can, I can't conjure up what we've built here and let you see it and decide whether you like it. The only way to prove it is to go look at what we've built. And as I said before, to talk to people in the towns where we have built. And again, when I say, you know, the pitch I make every time is, we're not going to force this on you. The other pitch I make is, we'll give you a list of every place we've ever built a community. Feel free to call, you know, every mayor, every administrator, and go visit any one of the communities. We won't just give you the two or three that you think are the nicest. Just so happens that it's pretty easy to get to Stafford and Barniget, Towns River, Seaside. We've built the communities in all of those towns. Lacy, and all the way up in the Combe County, Hal, or about the border of Homme Del. So there's quite a few that are pretty easy. Very happy to have folks to visit and do your due diligence so you can see what you're really going to have when it's all said and done. So I invited Janice to do that this year, and she did it, so that's a good thing.
Anyone else have any?
Madam President, may I ask a couple of questions? If you could go back and explain the tax credit, who's making that application? You or?
We made that.
Okay, so you're making an application, and you would get the tax credit, which is worth fourteen million dollars?
Correct.
And that fourteen million dollars is then used to finance the construction of the?
It's used as equity. So it's a very complicated process, but it's, so this is kind of the way it works. This program came into effect in nineteen eighty-six. It's the most successful housing program in the history of the federal government.
What's it called again?
It's the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, LIHTC. And the federal government allocates a certain amount of tax credits, which are really federal tax dollars, to each state based on population. And then in each state, there's an agency, usually in this case, it's the New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, NJHFA, another alphabet, but they oversee the implementation of those dollars. So they write up a rulebook, a sort of a scorebook, to see how you compete. And in New Jersey, it's pretty well done. It's objective, it's not subjective, so it's not a political thing. And you go in, and you know as a developer whether you have a good chance of winning or not, because you don't win, you're risking all that capital. So you go in and make an application. So assume you're successful. They only have a limited amount of money, and they award you those tax credits. Then what happens is, one of the big banks typically, we use Wells Fargo a lot, Citibank, JP Morgan, Goldman Sachs, the bank TD Bank, we've done work with Citizen Bank, all the banks all over the place, they have certain community reinvestment obligations, to invest in communities. This is one of the ways that they can do that. So they are very, they buy tax credits. So they'll buy a tax credit, and a tax credit is just what it sounds like. It's a dollar tax credit, it's a dollar off your federal income tax. You'd all like to have that, you could. And so they'll come in and buy them. And they'll usually, they sell right now for around, somewhere around ninety-five cents to get a dollar's worth of tax credit. Those tax credits, you don't get them on one year. They burn out over a ten-year period, the tax credits. So what's in it for the investor? So typically, what really happens is, that investor, Wells Fargo or whoever it is, owns ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of that community. We own point oh-one percent of the stock. We manage it, we maintain it, we get the cash flow, and they get their tax credits. And then when they get paid off and they get their tax credits, then they turn the property back over to us. But, so what happens is, we make a deal with them, they provide us with a construction loan, but over the period of the construction, they drop this equity in, this fourteen million dollars that comes in over a period of time. And then when you're finished, you've paid off your construction loan with that equity, and you have a mortgage as well. So you have fourteen million dollars in equity, and then you have really a small mortgage because the rents are fairly low. Actually, I think I stuck the rent chart in the book, but I didn't need to hand that with the rest of it, but in case anybody asks me. The rents are affordable, and the idea about the rents is, people shouldn't have to pay more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. So the rents are based on that. And in this portion of the area of the state, because the average income is relatively low compared to the rest of the state, bankers, incomes are lower and therefore rents are lower. Because the rents are lower, you can only afford a certain mortgage, and that's what they do. They size the mortgage so that you can just have enough cash flow to pay the mortgage back. And they do it, for those who understand, you know, deal with banks and so forth, at a debt coverage ratio of one point five to one, which is very low. In a market-rate deal, the bank wants it to be one point three or better. They do it that way because they obviously want to use, they want to use as many dollars as they can to build affordable housing, so they squeeze you tight, and it's underwritten at one point one five to one, and that's how the deal works. You have, you know, in this case, because of the way the incomes are, we probably wouldn't even have a mortgage. The mortgage would be, in order to make the rents work, to keep up with costs, because you can control rents, but you can't control costs. So as, over time, costs have a tendency to catch up to your rents when your rents are not.
But I don't mean to interrupt your flow there, but are those rents not set by COA?
Yeah, the rents are set.
So are they not, I don't know, don't they increase?
They do, but they typically increase much less than market-rate rents.
So?
You'll average one or two percent a year increase in rent? And you'll average about three percent increase in costs.
And there's no management fee you get from?
You get a management fee?
From?
And that's built into it. It's sixty-five dollars a unit a month is the management fee, and that pays our, all of our management fee.
But does that management fee, that's on top of the rent by the tenant or?
No, no, it's built into the rent. In other words, you have a rental stream.
Right.
Rent stream, you have to fund all of your escrows. They make you have escrows so that you need a new roof, you need a new HVC system.
Right.
You've got all those escrows in place. There's, you've got to have enough money to be able to. There's, you know, you've gotta have enough money to pay your people to manage it properly and effectively. That's included, you know, in the, in the underwriting of the whole thing. And, you know, the idea is to make sure that you keep, you know, they want you to keep your head above water, but not too far below.
Okay. So, i- during your presentation, you mentioned that it has to have a pilot at, at six point two eight percent. Is that the minimum or the maximum?
No, that is the exact number that-
Okay, so it has to be, and, and what's the-
It could be lower, but-
Right. But what's the, what's the, is that a thirty-year pilot, or?
Yes, it's as, for as long as, it's typically as long as there's a mortgage in. If there's not, but it would be, it would be a thirty-year pilot, for the length of the time of the deed restriction.
So the deed, so the, 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 the property i- is subject to a pilot for thirty years?
Correct. As long as the deed restriction's in place, you're getting your credit for your affordable housing, there's a pilot in place. If, and you can't get the fourteen million dollars unless you do the pilot. It has to happen. Um, you, you can't, you can't compete if you don't have the pilot.
Okay, so-
In this case, frankly, if we didn't have a pilot, we wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't work financially.
It will, i- i- and it won't work financially i- unless you get the tax credit?
Correct.
Okay. So, the, just to, so, we understand, the six point two percent is the percent of the value, or the value of the-
No, that'd be income.
Income, okay.
Total income.
And that's fixed, and that will increase as the rents increase?
Correct.
Okay. But those rents will only increase as, if affordable housing, whatever affordable housing says?
Right.
Or whoever the governing-
The state, the state covers that, you know, how much the rents can go up on an annual basis. Every year you get an increase.
Okay.
Historically, it's been like one percent. This year, it's gonna be more, but it'll, I don't think it'll ever be more than five percent. Um, so, it would be, in this case, this year-
Okay.
...be higher than that, but they won't.
So just to clarify, the deed restriction for the COA unit, i- i- that's thirty years? Everything's thirty years here, right?
Thirty years, yeah. There's actually an additional fifteen-year use period on top of it, so it's really forty-five, but the, the pilot was for thirty years.
Does the deed restriction say affordable housing, or will it say age-restricted affordable housing?
Both.
So it will say age-restricted affordable housing. So for thirty years, that can be only an age-restricted property?
Correct.
Would, uh, a, uh, permanent deed restriction, uh, be considered?
Yeah, well, and we always do it. We would make a permanent deed restriction on age restriction.
Okay.
So forever, and-
That's a, that's a good thing, okay. The, uh, and, and just so I understand, you manage all these properties?
Correct.
Who owns it?
Well, I'd say I own it, but, you know, through, it's a very complicated process. So, what happens is, as I said, um, if, whoever our tax credit investor is, on paper, they own it. We're partners, right?
Right.
We have an agreement. They own ninety-nine point nine, and the reason they own ninety-nine point nine-nine is they get all the depreciation on the, on the building. They want depreciation. That's how they make their return. They get the tax credits and the depreciation on the building, probably comes to work, if you wanna know, but-
No, that's fine, that's, I can't know enough.
Um, and, and so, but, but we, but under the agreement, we have the right and the obligation to maintain the property. They come check it, and are watching their investment to make sure everything's done the way it's supposed to be done. The state comes and inspects, they make sure everything's done the way it's supposed to be done.
Right.
And then, in the, the entity, so everyone's gotta be a new entity, it's what's called a single-purpose entity. And, under the tax laws, this is all under IRS regulation. They make you do a single-purpose entity. I own, with my, my one partner, two of us are the owners of that LLC that is partners with the tax credit investor. But, you know, if somebody says to me, what do you own? I mean, in my mind, I own that. That's, you know, because eventually, it's coming to me-
Right.
-we're gonna get rid of that, you know, the investor, and it's, I'm gonna own it in a, in an LLC.
Yeah.
Sean owns things in an LLC, but if somebody asks you, whose property is that? You say, that's my property. Um, but, you know, it's, the legal structure of it is, is complicated.
Yeah.
But the, at the bottom of that legal structure is me. And, and, and by the way, they make us personally guarantee the tax credits, that we're gonna produce those tax credits, so that they can get their, uh, their tax benefit. So, I'll be signing the fourteen million dollar personal guarantee on this property.
All right. So I, I won't get into too, too many details with regards to the construction, but what, what is the proposed square footage? Do you know?
I, I, I could, I don't know off the top of my head, I mean, we know that, but I don't know off the top of my head, because we're trying to figure out what's going to-
Would that type of facility have an emergency generator?
Uh, yes, and it's fully sprinkler, the building's fully sprinkler. Um, and, yes, there's a generator.
Okay. Thank you.
Will Summers Point residents be considered first?
No, they can't.
You're not allowed to do that.
Oh, okay.
But what happens is, is the way we market it, you know, we don't market it in, uh, North Jersey, we market it in this area. And what we typically do with, uh, with our partner communities is, we'll put it on your website, you know, if you have senior, um, uh, community groups, we'll, we'll provide that information, we go speak to them if, if anybody asks us to. Oftentimes, before we, and what happens here is the way you, there's a, a lottery that applicants, and we take their names and we put them in a lottery, they have to qualify and all that stuff, both from a financial standpoint, they have to qualify from a, um, credit standpoint, and they have to qualify from a criminal backgrounds, uh, standpoint. But, we've often come out and made a presentation and explained to people, because it's a little bit of a daunting process to go through, um, because you have to make sure that the person's properly qualified, so that you don't lose the tax credits, and it can be a little bit, you know, especially if you're a senior, you know, a little bit daunting, like, hey, I'd really like to sell my house and move on, um, and it is really beneficial for people to be able to do that. So we try and guide people and walk them through it one step at a time, so that we make it as easy as possible. But, we end up with local people, that's just, you know, just makes sense, I mean, you know, it's gonna be people who live in this community, and they're gonna hear about it and see it going up. And there's a timeframe, you know, we're only allowed to start that process of taking, um, of actually taking full applications, and remember the exact case, what, four months before we're ready to have occupied. But all from the, from the beginning of the announcement, we take names, and then we'll reach out to all those people on the list. And, I would guess that with a property this size, let's assume it's sixty, we'll probably have five hundred applications. Um, we get, oh, we get, it depends, if we've had as many as seven or eight hundred applications. We used to do it, where it was first come, first served, people camp out, uh, trying to get units. We don't do that anymore, because it's not safe, it's a lottery system. But, uh, but senior properties have actually taken quite a while. They, they don't fill up real fast, because people are taking their time, they, they wanna see it, they want, they wanna look at their unit before they make a commitment. And it's not an easy decision for seniors to, to move on from, from a home, and, you know, live in a, in a place where they've got lots of other people. So it, it takes some time for people to make that decision.
Madam President?
Yes.
Um, it sounds like a very exciting project, and it sounds like something that the city could really benefit from. I'm just wondering, um, with the short timeframe that they're looking at, um, is there something that we can do tonight in terms of providing some guidance into the next steps here to, you know, is it, are we looking at a thumbs up? This looks like a good project, let's investigate it further. What, what do you envision our next step here as council? Because they are on a tight timeframe, and, uh, you know, we gotta do something.
Well, we have the timeline, so, um, of what, what you need from us. So I guess it just goes back to committee, and then the next meeting is, what was the first thing on that list? Was a resolution.
Yeah, uh, it was, what we, if, if the, if the council was so inclined, if we would, Walter's group, uh, would post an escrow, if you would accept it, um, to be able to provide you information and materials and things that we were talking about this evening in a more formal basis, so your professionals could review it. That would be really the first thing, um, that would be helpful, I think, to the council, start to solidify the information your people took for your, for your group. And we're happy to post that escrow if, if the board would want to do that.
So tonight, if, if anyone, does anybody have any objection to them moving forward with an escrow? At our next meeting, we would have to do a resolution to accept the escrow. But, um, so tonight, I guess, is just a straw vote here. We're not, we're not committing to anything other than moving forward with the research and having our professionals look at everything.
I think we'll have a straw vote.
Just a question before we, before you do that, just, uh, the escrow, if we accept an escrow, we're not obligated to anything, is that correct? Mr. Smith?
Right.
Right, right.
And we acknowledge that, by the way, so it's clear.
Right.
I just mean him doing that.
Yeah, the escrow is just so we can start our... Anybody else have any questions, any objections, any, anything? No?
I just have one question.
Yes.
How tall of a building are we looking at? The two, three-story?
It's, uh, it's, uh-
Four stories.
Forty-eight feet.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh-
Mr. Frank, what's there?
Okay, so we'll, we'll get, yeah, committee and get the resolution together for the next, our next meeting is June ninth, I believe.
So do we do a straw vote, up-down? What are we doing now?
It looked to me like, I'll just carry on.
Yes.
But I thought that the way it was phrased was, was okay with it.
Okay, fine. I was in-
Everyone's okay with it, we'll move, right.
Having a, a call.
Okay.
Thank you, sounds great.
No one's objecting, so we'll move forward for you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice, yeah.
Okay, does anyone have any communications to offer? Hearing none. Uh, the mayor's report.
Good evening, Council President, and thank you. This Monday, uh, we will be celebrating Memorial Day, and I'm asking that all of city council join me in walking the parade. Now, the parade will start at eleven o'clock a.m. at Dawes and Shore, proceed down to City Hall, and then back up First Street to Patriots Park, where we'll have our, um, service, Memorial Day service. So, again, I'm inviting all the city council to join us. Uh, the Historical Society had their flea market this weekend, and I got there real early, and it looked like it was gonna be a great day for them. It was a perfect day, of course, Saturday. Historical Society will also have an open house on Saturday, June eleventh, from ten a.m. to two p.m. over at the Historical Society, and they're gonna have a porch mixer at Gregory's on June fourteenth, from six o'clock p.m. to nine o'clock p.m. And as I finish, I would be remiss if I didn't say a few words about Sergeant Jewel Craddock. The few of us here in this room grew up in Summers Point, and, uh, Jewel was one of those guys you looked up to. His son, Joe, is, uh, currently our zoning board, uh, chair, and he's just was an all-around good guy, and somebody, he was amongst those, those people in town that, uh, like Orville Mathis, and, uh, Alan Rizley in Lake Colao, when we only had three police officers in this town. And, uh, he just was one of those great Summers Pointers, and I will miss him dearly. So with that being said, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Frost?
Yes, good evening.
Talk, talk into your microphone, please.
Sorry. Is, um, the only thing I have to report this evening is, we did have a meeting with the county, uh, last week, and we are moving forward with, um, exploring the corridor study along Shore Road. So, um, I know I had some correspondence with Cherry Del Rosso today, and, um, we'll report back when I have more.
Thank you. That was a very positive meeting, actually. I think it went well.
Yeah, yes, it was.
The response from the county was, was good, so. Uh, Mr. Smith?
There's nothing, I, I promise you, there's something that's wrong.
Okay. You're being recorded, you know. Uh, Mr. Snyder?
Uh, yes, we have the, uh, pre-division meeting for the West Atlantic Phase Two this morning with the State of New Jersey and the contractor. The, uh, work is anticipated to start late next week, uh, Phase Two. That'll be the storm water first, and then the concrete work, and then paving of both Phase One and Phase Two will be done, uh, this evening in July, when school's open.
Thank you. Anyone have a committee report to offer?
I do.
Mr. Owen?
Economic Development, we just met this, this past Monday. Uh, it was a good meeting. We had a guest speaker, Danny Foreman. He works for, uh, subsidiary of Xfinity Comcast. He went on with his presentation of how we could market this city. Also gave us dollar figures as to what the startup would be, as well as, uh, how we could promote economic growth here in, in town. We also, uh, with our chairman here, um, who's in the audience, John, we also discussed there's gonna be a feasibility study for Shore Road from the mansion all the way down to Ocean Avenue for, uh, traffic, which is good. And, uh, I guess finally, um, the Summers Point Business Association's gonna have a mixer, uh, June seventh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty down at the point, which also would be good to, for people to network with business. And if there's anything else I missed, I'm sure you might chime in.
I think you got it. Any other committee reports? Okay. Uh, could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May twelfth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, please?
Some move.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Ordinance number twelve.
Ordinance number twelve of twenty-twenty-two. Bond ordinance providing for various improvements and acquisitions in and by the City of Summers Point in the County of Atlantic, New Jersey, appropriating three million fifty-five thousand dollars therefor, and authorizing the issuance of two million nine hundred and two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars of bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the costs thereof.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember McQuiggan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes.
Councilmember De Pamphylis?
Yes.
Councilmember McCary?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirteen, please.
Ordinance number thirteen of 2022. Bond ordinance providing for various sewer utility capital improvements in and by the City of Summers Point in the County of Atlantic, New Jersey, appropriating $1,458,000 therefor and authorizing the issuance of $1,458,000 bonds or notes of the city for financing the costs thereof.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DePanfleas?
Yes.
Councilmember McCary?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruno?
Yes.
Councilmember Owen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dill?
Yes.
Councilmember McWiggen?
Yes.
Council President Johnston?
Yes.
Resolutions, please.
Resolutions number one twenty-three of 2022. A resolution authorizing and approving the promotion of Patrolman Nicholas Wagner to the position of sergeant within the Police Department of the City of Summers Point. Number one twenty-four, Chapter 159 Resolution, Fiscal Year 2019 Recycling Tonnage Grant. Number one twenty-five, authorizing estimated tax billing. One twenty-six, awarding bid for the 2022 Road Program Phase One. One twenty-seven, rejecting bids for 2022 Storm Water Improvements Phase One. One twenty-nine, awarding bid and authorizing dredge material and reuse project. One thirty, approving proposals, goods and services, 2022.
May I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on any of these resolutions. If you wish to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
One oh six, he stalls at his. As a retired citizen of Summers Point, I attend most councils, zoning and, and planning board meetings. But when I lived here in the nineties, I was very focused on my job and raising my kids and therefore I really never went to meetings. I assumed our city representatives had our interests and, you know, our best interests in their, in their, what they were doing. And they were focused on day-to-day operations running the city. So I think many of your current constituents that are younger probably feel the same way. They don't come to meetings. And they have their trust in you.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but this is for resolutions only. Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. Because you only have three minutes. I didn't want you to.
We're being told tonight that Resolution 128 is being pulled.
That is not on the agenda and we cannot, it is, has been pulled. It is not on the agenda.
Am I allowed to speak?
Not at this time, no. We're not, it's not on the agenda. It is not a resolution on our agenda.
So I don't, I'm not allowed to have a comment?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
Is that permanently or just because we had two?
It is not open for discussion during this particular public session. We are only talking about the resolutions that are on the agenda.
Make sure everybody prayed and had some money, then I'll come back.
I'm just.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to close, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-three.
Resolution number one twenty-three of 2022. A resolution authorizing and approving the promotion of Patrolman Nicholas Wagner to the position of sergeant within the Police Department of the City of Summers Point.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. McWiggen.
I wish to recuse myself from this vote as one of my sons is employed by the Police Department and could be under the direct supervision of Mr. Wagner if this, if this resolution were to pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, you knew, you knew it was coming, didn't you? Okay, yeah, Council, Council President, I will also recuse myself from the, the vote tonight on Mr. Wagner as he'll be assuming the sergeant's position, which one of my sons currently hold. And in the future, for other testing, it may be, it would become a conflict for me. So I'm recusing myself.
Council President, I'll be heard at the, the completion of the vote. Please.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? I need a roll call vote, no?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-three is approved.
For council's knowledge, tomorrow afternoon, since we have voted, or you have voted to promote Nicholas Wagner, four o'clock PM, I will be swearing him in here in the council chambers. And you're all invited to attend.
What time, Jack?
Four o'clock. Four o'clock. It's about the time I get back from East Atlantic.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Even though I couldn't vote on this resolution, I've known Mr. Wagner for, since he, I coached him in T-ball. He's always been an excellent person. Not only is he a quality police officer, but also he has been heavily involved in hockey and football and other various things in the city. And he's, he has my respect and I'm sure he has the respect of many citizens in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
A few years back, Nick was also recognized for being volunteer of the year with, along with his brother. Done all good things for the kids down there at the recreation parks.
All right. Resolution number one twenty-four.
Resolution number one twenty-four of 2022. Chapter 159 Resolution, Fiscal Year 2019 Recycling Tonnage Grant.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-four is approved. Number one twenty-five?
Resolution number one twenty-five of 2022 Authorizing Estimated Tax Billing.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-five is approved. Number one twenty-six?
Resolution number one twenty-six of 2022. Awarding bid for the 2022 Road Program Phase One.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-six is approved. Number one twenty-seven?
Resolution number one twenty-seven of 2022. Rejecting bids for 2022 Storm Water Improvements Phase One.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-seven is approved. Number one twenty-nine?
Resolution number one twenty-nine of 2022. Awarding bid and authorizing dredge material and reuse project.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one twenty-nine is approved. Number one thirty?
Resolution number one thirty of 2022. Approving Proposals, Goods and Services, 2022.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number one thirty is approved. Anyone have any old business to discuss? Hearing none. New business. Consideration of a social affair permit for National Multiple Sclerosis Society of New York on September 22nd, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Great Bay Country Club.
They need insurance.
Yeah, they're all in order.
All of their paperwork is in order. Any, everyone okay with this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Also approval for a footrace application for Allison's Breakfast Club. Walk to hold a footrace on June 4th, 2022 on the bike path. This has been approved by the, by Chief Summers and the Insurance Fund Commissioner. Everyone okay with this?
Good.
I'm good with that.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Discussion of the bills.
Yes, this evening we have a bill list dated May 24th in the amount of $2,605,458.37.
Could I have a motion to open for a public comment, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for a public comment. Please state your name and address when you come forward. And also to afford everyone the opportunity to address the governing body, the public may speak only one time and not to exceed three minutes.
My name is Patricia Pearson. Five days, seven more, so I was in Jersey. I had a lot of things to talk to you about today, but something else has taken over. We're getting a project in Summers Point, right? A middle-class senior citizen project squashed down on the corner of Maryland and Bay. Now, here's the story, folks. There is good senior citizens housing. There's one in Cape May on the Mall. I, I don't quite get this. Is Mr. Scrumber selling the developer the land and then he's going to put the thing on and the state's going to give them the money? Is that, is that the flow there?
We're in the very beginning of stage, very beginning stages of understanding what the project is. We have a lot of work to do to figure all of this out, so.
Mr. Scrumber, so he said, my brothers and I bought property on the corner of, you know, Maryland Bay, which I, I don't mind if he buys it, I'm glad he would. And then he brings in the developer to come put up this hundred apartment project to take care of all these.
Fifty, fifty or sixty? Fifty or sixty?
Well, why did he say a hundred?
No, he did not. But his, he was talking about another project that they already have.
They have one, okay. So what, the problem here is that you're, you're being hustled a little bit. I don't know if you know it or not, but you are. Because you have to get all this done by the end of August. I don't even think you have, you only have one meeting in July and one meeting in August to cancel, don't you?
Yes, uh huh.
Yeah, so there's one on one. So when's the public ever going to be able to come in and say anything? Then you have to call Tara and everybody else and get them out. Because you know about density, you know what density is? Putting all this building here, then four affordable houses, then a big paddle club, the whole bit. It's all going to be squashed in there. I personally had so many other things to tell you tonight, but I think you're being hustled, I think, in a way. And it may be in a nice way, but in a way. If it's fifty or sixty apartments, these senior citizens have cars. All those cars are out there on Maryland and Bay. You're changing your city. You're getting a project. There's projects all over Maryland, Philadelphia and everywhere else. They start out nice, they end up a mess. And I don't think you're totally qualified to hustle all this stuff up so they can get $14 million from the state by August 31st. To me, it's bizarre. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, John Helbig, 106 East Dawes Avenue. I just had a couple of quick things to go over. A good, a good thing for the city, I think, and a heads up for Greg. It appears we're going to get that FEMA scoping grant. This is a project that Greg and Jim Rattler, our city planner, worked on, which could bring about $148,000 to the city to do a lot of flood mitigation, scoping work along Bay Avenue, hopefully to prevent flooding, tidal flooding in the long term for the city. So, good job, Greg. Basically, a lot of what Pat said, I was concerned about. Actually, as, as Councilman McWiggen was asking questions, my head was spinning in terms of the financing of this project. You know, I, I don't think council should commit to moving forward until you get a detailed fiscal analysis. Like, what's this going to mean to the city 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now? I'm sure it could be a very nice project, but let's look at what the long-term fiscal impact to the city is. Lastly, we did have our cannabis survey online. Basically, that survey now has ended. What I'd like to do is provide a summary, perhaps by the next meeting, to council. Give you what, what was the feedback and, and basically the results of that survey. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charlie Habercoin. I live at 47 Wilson Avenue in Summers Point. Six and a half years ago, my wife and I made a decision to move to Summers Point. And we had, we don't regret that during a period of living here. Watching the redevelopment, how it's been executed and planned, what you have planned. I think I give you a lot of credit. I've lived in a lot of towns throughout the country. People have been very thoughtful. I think tonight, nobody made a commitment. I hope you'll be as thoughtful, and I'm sure you will come forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for a public comment. Okay, uh, let's see where I'm at. Let's pay the bills, Mr. Could I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we can pay the bills. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion also.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.